Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. And first item of business tonight is in regards to a public hearing. And I'm going to ask the town clerk to lead us through that process, please, ma'am.
A couple meetings ago, the board adopted a resolution of intent to close a portion of Carolina Avenue over by Block 2. So this is just the public hearing to hear if anybody has any comments to do that. And then later on today, based on any comments, you guys could adopt the actual order to close.
Anyone wish to speak for the purpose of the public hearing? If you will, raise your hand and be recognized. Chairman, to the left rear over here, yes, sir. Come forth when it's your turn and give us your name and address and speak into the microphone, please.
I'm not used to public speaking, but I do have a question. Where are we going with having so many parking spaces in one place? Ching, 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 ching is all I hear. It's a moneymaker. I know it's a moneymaker, but what are we sacrificing by loading up Harbor Island with nothing but parking? If you were here during Fourth of July, there was only a third of us there, the water in front of Jordan Boulevard was closed down.
Excuse me, town clerk. Is this actually relevant to the question that we have asked about the closure?
I was just asking if I could speak.
Of the closure. But you can speak during the regular meeting to this. This is specifically to the point. I'm asking if this is correct.
It's just closing that portion of the street. That's all that we're really talking about for the public hearing.
Okay, well, that's what I was getting at.
Let me, as chairman here, I'm not trying to get into the clerk's job, but if you will verbalize your comment in regards to the impact of the parking and the closing of the street, which that would be Mary, but you've got to bring the topics together.
I don't see the need of adding more parking places by taking a road away. That's my comment about it. I just don't understand the need unless we have got the infrastructure to handle all that extra parking.
All right. Thanks, sir. Who's next? Left rear. Yes, sir.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. I only speak as a private citizen. I think, though, as a past civil servant and emergency responder, to get, to close down a street that's going to result in, let's say, 10 additional parking spaces when we have enough, enough public parking, paid public parking now already is ridiculous. If you had somebody, a loved one, on the far side of that street and you had an emergency vehicle that could make that problem better or save that person, to have that, to have that emergency vehicle go around this block rather than just drive straight through, I think is ridiculous. And it's been said, the parking studies that I've, I've heard of say that we have more than enough public parking at this point. I'm not against doing something with the block for something else, but let's do, let's not start closing down a vital infrastructure and thoroughfares on this island. It's a little bit too crowded as it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else had a hand up in the back? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name's Mike Faly, 137 Carolina Avenue. I oppose to the closing of the street because what's going to be done to the street. They're apparently going to be turned into, the street will become part of a parking lot, which would lead me to another comment, which I have signed up to talk to. So is that relevant now or?
Speaking of the street matter right now.
Okay. When you close that street and turn it into a parking lot, you're going to devalue that how, those houses across the street. You're going to, we're going to be of major concern about how we're going to get fire engines down. You'll have to go all the way down and around the block or ambulances. So I guess, I guess you're kind of limiting what we can say about this is, I object to that because of the, the streets. We have no idea what you're doing with this lot. And I think that's probably what should be spoken to on the next section. There's no capital improvement program here. You're just closing stuff down. You're having a parking lot. You've got piers, you've got all kinds of crap going on, and the citizens don't know where you're going with it. So this is part of a capital improvement program, which is not being articulated very well, and you're not getting a lot of support about it from it, from the citizens. That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak? Anyone else want to speak in the public hearing that we're now about to conclude? Last call. All right, I declare the public hearing closed. And at this point in time, we will begin our regular meeting. And there's a lot going on in the world. Let's pause for a moment of reflection and prayer silently before we begin the regular meeting for just a moment. Silence, please. Thank you very much. And we'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome all of you. And those of you that may be attending for the first time, I would ask you to pay attention to the, my left rear of the room. There's a table back there with some paperwork that might help you follow the meeting. And now let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. To my right, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, commissioners, let's please turn our attention to the consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written and submitted.
Second? Any discussion, hearing now, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Let's look at number five, consideration of approving the minutes for a regular meeting of August the 16th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second. Any discussion, hearing now, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Number six on the agenda, public comments on agenda items. And I have a list of three people that have signed up. Again, give your name, please, for the record, and where you live.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. The last commissioners' meeting last month, I was pleasantly surprised when the matter of the $500,000 Part F grant was voted down. Finally, I thought to myself, the commissioners as a group are being circumset, circumspect and reasonable about pouring more money and energy and ransoming ourselves to this worthless peer. Then I attended the HB Property Owners Association meeting to find out once again, with no public notice, no public comment, no public hearing, which is not only, not only against Section 143, 31812 of the North Carolina Constitution, but also the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution.
I hate to interrupt, sir. As point of order has been made by Commissioner.
I don't believe the peer, the peer grant is on this agenda.
Okay.
Okay, again, you can speak to it at the second.
Right.
But this is about agenda items specifically.
Okay. And there were, I thought there were peer items on this agenda.
The peer grant does not appear on this agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
So if you will, sir, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
Later on in the meeting. Ms. Martha Myers.
My name is Martha Myers. I reside at 2947 Island Drive, Southeast Bolivia. Good evening, Mayor Holden, commissioners and town officials. I come to you tonight with regard to and in support of item number 18 on your agenda, discuss it, discussion and possible action on planning for dry sand placement of mats to enhance handicap access to the beach. Beach access routes are continuous, unobstructed paths that cross the surface of the beach and provide pedestrian access to the water. Beach mats, wooden walkways, and paved pathways are among ways a locality might choose to improve access to the beach. At least one beach access route must be provided for each half mile of beach shoreline administered by or managed by the same entity. Beach access routes are required when an entity that administers or manages a beach constructs or alters any circulation paths, parking facilities, toilet facilities, or bathing facilities that serve the beach. Beach access routes are also required when the locality undertakes a beach nourishment project. Beach access routes must connect an entry point to the beach to the high tide level at tidal beaches. The Coastal Management Commission is currently looking how to modify guidelines so that more communities are able to provide dry sand placement of mats and access similar to that provided at Carolina Beach. Beach access routes can be permanent or removable. Removable routes are often an option where restrictive permits are issued in coast and shoreline areas where seasonal tides or high flows may remove or damage a permanent structure or in areas where the beach erodes and builds up quickly each season and causes a permanent beach access to become inaccessible. Ocean Cure is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based out of Carolina Beach whose mission is to provide increased beach accessibility to our coasts. For more than 10 years, Ocean Cure has served over 1,000 participants with life challenges and disabilities through the use of beach wheelchairs, accessible floating, accessible flooring, and adaptive surfboards. Ocean Cure has even gone so far as to fulfill the wishes of individuals receiving hospice care by taking them to the beach in their hospital beds. Beach wheelchairs, while not a substitute for beach access routes, do provide a welcome option for some beachgoers. They do not, however, allow for independent access to the beach. The town of Holden Beach, unlike all other neighboring beach communities, does not currently have a beach wheelchair loan program. A private citizen through the use of his own, I'm almost done, less than a minute. A private citizen through the use of his own and donated funds is currently providing this service free of charge to people with mobility impairments. Additionally, two businesses on the island have beach wheelchairs available for rent. Each year, the demand for this equipment increases. It's time for the town to step up and work together with members of the community in support of a beach wheelchair loan program. In conclusion, all beaches can be accessible. To do so does require working together with community members to learn the resources that are available as well as talking with members to adequately understand the needs of the users. Accessibility is a need. It's not a want. Providing and improving beach accessibility may also require thinking outside of the box, but it can be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mike Faly.
I guess I need to take horse on discussion, item number 11. So I'll start with item number eight, Chief Dixon's police report. Last, last meeting, Chief Dixon handed out a police report which stated that AutoConnect had given out 492 parking citations for the month of July. Not an eyebrow behind that table went up. 492 parking tickets. $12,300 taken from people that we want to come and enjoy our beach. This month, it's a little different. It's 344. I've been doing a lot of campaigning out in the housing areas on the other side of the bridge for other reasons. And one of the questions I asked him about, what do you think about the Holden Beach parking situation? It's, I start running. We've pissed off, excuse my French, a lot of people and given this place a really nasty reputation. Who are these elitists that live across that bridge? We used to swim there. I spent my whole life swimming there, and now I can't bring my kids because I've got to pay an extra $15. They can't afford it. Take it for what it's worth, but you might want to think about backing off a little bit. The other is about closing this road. We don't need more parking. The parking lots were not full this year. We've chased people out of here left and right. I'd recommend you hold off on this parking thing. I know you want a contract. I know you want to get it done, but we have no capital improvement plan. We haven't thought about what it's going to do to the real estate on the other side of that parking lot. I'll tell you, if I owned one of those homes, I'd be screaming right now. I'd be here, jumping on your table, saying no. Okay? So I don't know whether you're going to put trailer lots in there or parking spots, but thank you for the minute.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's all I had. Ms. Ferguson? I think we have some very important guests.
Tonight, we'd like to welcome the Wilmington District Army Corps of Engineers Colonel Bennett, Christine Bremen, and Bob Kiesler to come up and give you guys an update on our coastal storm risk management study in terms of duration, scope, cost, and some potential funding options. The board may want to consider a letter of intent regarding changes to the study parameters.
Thank you, commissioners, citizens of Holden Beach. Appreciate the opportunity. Oh. Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you. My name's Colonel Bennett. I'm the commander of the Wilmington District of the Corps of Engineers. Again, you've got Bob Kiesler, Christine Bremen here to support. Really what I want to talk about for a second, let me see if I can figure out how to work this, is the Holden Beach GR. We call it GRR. Basically, it is Corps of Engineers government talk for doing a study to determine federal interests, to see if there is an opportunity for the federal government to come in here and provide coastal storm risk reduction methods. And again, probably familiar with some of the adjacent beach communities in North Carolina, what that looks like. It looks like a variety of things. Often, it's, you know, putting sand on the beach as a, as an example, to provide protection in case of storm events. So a little bit of history. So it's a GRR because we're coming back and taking a look. This was authorized, actually, for the first time back in 1966. It was never appropriated, right? So it was authorized, but there was never any money put forward. We did get money back in August of 2021 to come and take a look. Again, first step is to do this feasibility study. Traditionally, we talk about this study looking like what we call a three-by-three. So kind of the baseline for these studies is they actually get it done for $3 million in three years. And that is a 50-50 cost share. Federal government puts up 50% of that and then a non-federal sponsor. Oftentimes, the town themselves puts in another 50%. And again, the goal is to accomplish this. In three years becomes the model, but every study is different. It takes place on the terrain, the geography, the tide, and basically the comprehensive environment. So we got started on this. We received $500,000 back in August. The town provided an additional $500,000. We got started, basically spent about nine months on this effort, and basically the federal funding stopped. So we're basically at a stop mark right now. But we did, we're able to do some good work. We were able to capitalize on the work that had been done by the town, some previous studies, and our own engineers. And we had some contracts out there to start to look at some of the issues. And I'll tell you right now, some of the issues are sand availability, right? If we look at where can we find sand out in the ocean adjacent inlets to build a profile, should we decide that that is something we need to look at? We talked about the environmental implications, where we would go, potential places to go look at this. Again, a lot of work taking place, but as we looked at this, we realized, hey, based on the complexity of Holden Beach and the town and the environment, we're not going to be able to do it in three years. Probably going to require an additional 11 months. And we're not going to be able to get it done in that $3 million total cost. Probably going to take an extra, right now, $1.25 million to complete that effort. So I got a map here. Again, this is no new news to anybody in this room as far as what the terrain looks like right now. Next slide. Oh, I control the slide. So a little bit of, of kind of where your money went, where the federal government went. This is a little bit of a background. So we did have to do, we put out some contracts to go take boring to make sure that we know where not just sand, but beach quality sand is, right? We don't want to be going and pumping boulders and other things, tires and all this type of stuff. So we hired some contractors to go do boring samples to figure out quantity and quality of sand. We had to do some modeling. So we take into consideration sea level rise and all these things that we hear about, storm trends, past and present, to see what we anticipate. Because if this project, we do determine there is a federal interest, and if this does get appropriated, they often have a 50-year lifespan. So we want to make sure we're understanding what the environment will look like, not just now, but anticipate what it'll look like with you. So we run these complex models that talk, again, all the variables, precipitation, storm frequency, storm intensity, sea level rise, what all that's going to look like. And again, that's where C-81,000 went and then labor. We've got a lot of engineers across the enterprise, not just in the Wilmington District. We've got coastal engineers, we've got geologists, we've got civil engineers trying to figure out what some of those mitigation member, methods may be, what are ways to protect infrastructure. If we decide we need to come in and put a sand, burn combination, what does that look like based on the storms, tidal surge, currents, things of that nature? So again, we spent a close to $1 million so far. Again, 500 from the federal government, 500 from, from the, from the town themselves. But again, as we look at the complexity, we realize it's going to take overall total cost, $4.25 million, and about 46 months. I had to get that done. Now, there is an opportunity, and this is what we mentioned, a letter of support, based on hurricane supplemental. And for those that are not aware, every time there's a big storm event, Congress comes in and say, hey, based on that, there's an opportunity, let's go appropriate some money to provide some relief. Now, there's some leftover money from previous storms, I think it's 2019, Chris, 2019, that that is available. And we are trying to put in a request to get some of that money to cover that gap. Now, the good news is if we can get that supplemental, it's all federal government. There is no non-federal participation. It'll be 100% funded by the federal government. That window is closing, which is why I'm here today, because I'm, you know, going to see if the commission, if that's something that they want to go for. We're willing to lean in and try and make a, make a play for that money, but again, we need to make sure we've got support from the commission and from the citizens. If we can't get that, the other path is through our traditional appropriations, potential appropriation, work plan, coming forward. We would hope by this spring, we can see if there's money available. And then again, we can come back and look for a 50-50 cost share. But again, fingers crossed that supplemental is something that we can get, and then the federal government will pick up that share. So I want to make sure the buzzer doesn't go off when I get buzzed off at the table here. So I will pause, and I am happy to answer any questions you have. I will tell you, I don't, I don't advocate for projects, against projects. I'm here to tell you what the Corps of Engineers can provide, the federal process, and let you all go for. So is there a question? Did I see somebody?
You've got almost $700,000 in USACE labor here. I have never seen a project plan, Gantt chart type of project plan, which I assume you have something like that, and where you are on different tasks so that we can get a flavor of what has been accomplished and what hasn't. Frankly, last year, it was only April of 2021 that we got the, you know, the presentation. And we were pretty pointed about asking questions about, okay, is all of the environmental stuff going to be covered here? You know, are we reasonably certain that we're going to be able to fit within this $3 million? Because that extra money is considerable for us.
Sure, I understand.
Okay? We've made, if you've listened to our citizens, you can tell, we've bought some things that are going to require money for us to do pretty big projects. So having another chunk of money suddenly be our responsibility in another year out keeps us from having the money to do those other things. So I really want to understand where we are. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but okay, it happens now. Is it going to happen again next year that it's as we've gotten deeper in, okay, we're going to need another 11 months or another year, and we're going to need another $1 million? Because at some point, it just, it gets out of control. And again, we've been in a situation before where studies went on and on and on, and it's, it's unfortunate. Going an extra 11 months, while I understand complexity and it needs more time. Another reason it was good to get this in place is there were a few of us who were going to be on the board for four years so we could see there would be the culmination and something in front of us to hopefully approve before our terms were up. Because when you get out of having anybody who was involved in the initial decision to start it, and now nobody's left, you know, it just becomes more difficult. So though I accept an 11-month delay could be necessary, and I understand there's some elements at the tail end that may be needed with extra reviews that would necessitate that, it still hurts. Because it is entirely possible that when this finishes then, there's not going to be anybody on the board that was involved the whole time and is highly memory knowledgeable. Okay? But my question is, what guarantee do we have, reasonable guarantee, that this isn't going to happen again next year?
Yeah.
And again, we asked quite a few pointed questions last year about are we, is this covered, is this covered? I was told it's, it's the three E's. It's engineering, economics, environmental. Environmental assessment was part of this. So to see that an additional scope is required for the EIS, I'm sort of, I'm truly puzzled by that one.
Sure. So, so I will tell you, I'm not going to make any guarantees. I'm going to tell you that what I know now, based on the analysis that I have and the information available to me, is this is our best guess. And if I didn't have confidence that that was going to be pretty close, I would tell you that. Yes, we didn't realize when we started, we had some sand availability concerns, that we realized we were going to have to possibly go out to frying pan shrooms to achieve that. No, I didn't realize that. But now I do. And I do know that is going to trigger an EIS lifer, and an EIS is expensive. And, and that is as more, here's my commitment to you, ma'am. As information becomes available to us, I am absolutely happy to share. And what I am telling you right now, based on the information that we have learned from when we started in August and where we are right now, based on the, the environment with sand availability, with sand availability becomes environmental impact concerns, that we believe we will be able to achieve that with an additional 11 months of work and $1.25 million. Now, when that gets appropriated, how it gets appropriated, and when that money comes, if this things change between now and then, and the storm roll in, and something different happens, there are no guarantees. But my commitment to you is to be transparent to you with the information that we have and to give you my and to give you my best assessment at any given time.
And this money that is there from past disasters, what would be the timing of understanding whether or not it can get appropriated to this, so that that extra one point, what's the window?
Yes, ma'am. I am hoping to have clarity within six months. From as far as, again, we get this letter of concern, I know the window of the decision of where they're going to redistribute some of this money is closing, but again, once the decision gets made, it works up and down the federal government process. I expect to have fidelity. Six months is the marker that I'm putting on the wall. Hopefully it can come sooner, but I hope, I would expect it by that time.
And is there a possibility of us just saying, let's take a timeout until that decision is made?
So, yes, I will tell you, the risk to that is that you lose the opportunity to go after that 100% federally funded GERSA money. So if you say, we're going to take a pause, and we are unwilling to proceed, I will tell you that that money will go off the table, that 100% federal share will not be available. And then it may also trigger getting further appropriations. Now, I will caveat that says, if you decide you want to make a play for it, and it doesn't come to fruition, can we stop at any given time? And the answer to that is yes. If that answers your question.
It does.
Commissioners, anybody else got a question? Is there, have you published, excuse me, have you published any of the progress reports as to what has been done so far?
The technical data, as far as what we've got? We can make that available to you.
Well, that's, I mean, it's, what we've got right now is nothing other than a request for a million.
Sure. I mean, we can, I mean, I can give you engineering detail, the analysis of sand availability. We've communicated some of that, but we can set up a time if you want. I mean, we've got boring samples, and I can bring in sand samples and bring PhDs in here if you'd like, but I didn't want to get too into weeds with technical engineering analysis. But yes, I mean, I am here to be transparent with you, and we'll share what I got.
What I, my understanding, with the memo of understanding that we were given back in April and May of last year, that we were going to be updated at certain points as to what the progress levels were. Now, here we are a year out, and I haven't seen anything. So it would be good, you don't have to get down, and I don't want to see samples. I want to just, you know, an overall report as to what we've done, where the nearly $700,000 worth of labor went. I mean, what did we do to get us here, to make us realize we need another?
Sure. And I can give you, I can give you the big moving pieces, which I kind of talked about in the modeling, I can share some of that modeling with you. But again, I'll go back to where I started. Sand availability, quantity, quality, surveying vessels and all around the inlet to understand if we have enough. Modeling across the enterprise, making sure we understand what the impacts of sea level rise, that's a lot of labor, and those are the bigger, and understanding the environmental impact sensitivities and whether we're going to need an EA, or likely have to go to an EIS. And that's basically the big picture items. Now, and again, we do comparisons, you know, is this about right money-wise? Is your project more expensive, less expensive? I will tell you, it's about on par with other similar projects. We've had to do this type of analysis, if that makes sense.
Was anything piggybacked off of the FEMA reimbursement that we just received right now, all the environmental studies?
Now, we have, we have had, so from an environmental standpoint, no, but we have been able to capitalize on some of the work and some of the sampling that you all have done. We've been able to integrate that, and we've got some working kind type of stuff, where we've been able to capitalize. If you're asking about a FEMA specific as it relates to the potential EIS, I don't have, I'm not tracking that.
Has there been stuff provided by the town that later in the process will sort of be a credit to?
Yes, well, so, I didn't mean to cut.
No, no, that there's the potential for us to have credit for information that we have provided.
So the information that you are providing and will continue to provide reduces the overall cost, if that makes sense. So we're not going out to hire a vessel to go take beach samples on places, or sediment samples on places that you've already done it. We're taking your work that you paid for and integrating that into our study. So we're not wasting your money and the federal government's money doing the same thing.
I saw in the SACS study, which there's been a lot of elements that have recently come available to read, you have back bay flooding analysis here. I only saw in SACS back bay flooding was a question up north near Albemarle and all that. So I was wondering, did this just simply not get into that question area that SACS had that big, has that big table?
Sure.
So it's, did this just, it's like, it's something that got recognized after the SACS was done, that this area also needs that? Or is that becoming a new element of?
Yes, ma'am. So what I would offer, so the SACS and the breakdown finite elements and why back bay wasn't here is not, they're kind of two different overall intent. I will tell you to your primary point, the back bay flooding analysis is something that, is something that the Corps of Engineers as an enterprise is realizing is something that we need to start taking into consideration. So when we start talking about storm influence, water levels, we cannot just focus on the ocean. We got to focus on the water that surrounds it. And since we have water behind here, we are realizing that if we don't address that now, we have a hole in our swing, so we might as well get into it now, figure it out, model it, make sure we understand the implications over a 50-year lifespan. So it is something that Corps of Engineers, to make sure that our studies are thorough, we got the engineering right, and that we don't build something that isn't going to address all the problems in the future that we need to start looking at now. So yes, in the past, it wasn't something we were looking at, but as we realize the impacts of the environment and the storm frequency and the storm intensity and water levels, we need to start analyzing it. Does that make sense, ma'am? Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Commissioners, anybody else got a question, comment?
When do you need, I, we need to go back and have a, if this is something that, as a board, we need to go back and have a discussion outside of this meeting.
Sure.
When do you need a?
So I would say, the sooner we can get it, the better. There are other projects that are rapidly competing for this, and the further that we can decide that this is something collectively that we want to go after, this GERSA money, the greater our opportunity of securing it and alleviating any non-federal participation. And again, I will remind you, the risk is, if we don't get in and we go down the path and it's not something we want, we can stop, right? We can back out of it, and you can put a freeze on it as we go down. So again, I'm not here to advocate for or against a project. I'm here to communicate capability, but I would see the risk, well, I just leave it at that. Because again, you can, you can put a stop to it, down to it.
But we can get a copy of like the project plan, where things are?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say it's more, if you have minutes for meetings, that, I'm assuming when you have a fairly substantial review meeting, that there are minutes captured that kind of highlight what's been done and where the problems are. That kind of information kind of keeps us up to date, and it's probably much more appropriate than giving us engineering reports that the majority of us will not be able to wait through.
Yeah, so here's my, ma'am, I will offer that I'm, I can come, I'm happy to give that stuff to you whenever you want. Now, again, most of our minutes are super technical, complicated stuff, but I can come in here and give you an update of where we're at, schedule, the complexities, the challenges, and where we see the path going. That is, that is not an issue, and if I was worried about that, I wouldn't be standing here today.
We have a special meeting planned for later in the month, but we might incorporate some of this into the future. Supply that information to us and/or possibly speak with us. It would be easier to make the decision. I mean, just drop it on us on an evening, and it's kind of hard to make this million-dollar decision right off the bat. All right. Any of your fellow Corps, Corps team members want to talk?
I was voted the spokesperson.
Oh, okay. I would yield to that, yes.
I was voted the spokesperson. No, I was on leave. Luke, snooze, you lose. Anybody, sir, I don't know, I don't want to.
I would actually say, if some of our community has questions, we should let them ask.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, just because I saw a hand going up.
Okay. Well, I was trying to follow some procedure, because he is the man, and.
No, I am happy to answer any questions from anybody, but I don't want to violate.
Okay. All right, not a problem. Anyone in the audience have questions of Colonel? Currently, you've got control of the floor.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Colonel. My name is Rick Parkes. I used to work in the industry, so I've got a little inside knowledge. I think what Pat and Rick are asking for for plans, we have pocket management software, so people can plug and help our loan, and that might be a good snapshot for them. My other concern is having looked at previous beach studies, and what you do can end up making requirements for certain numbers of parking spaces. These gone from, in the past year or so, we've gone from maybe 230 to, if I count what, maybe around 700, right? Fifty eventually? So my question is, does the Corps have a field for what our parking requirements might need? Because they need to have the.
So, two parts to that question. Yes, there are parking requirements, because again, if the federal government is putting money on it, it needs to be, you know, it is accessible to everybody. Now, are we at a point in that study yet where we can tell you exactly how many parking spots that's going to be? No, but will we share it with you? Absolutely.
We're looking at about 10 spots every quarter mile.
10 spots every quarter mile.
But I don't know how that.
And we'll.
It varies up to, we haven't done anything else.
And it depends on how far you're talking, there's not.
Absolutely.
I thought there could be requirements for a larger number, if you've got that there is a model requirement, that you may have a lot of large requirement, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I don't want, it's like, you rose here, but it's a walkway, and 10 spots every quarter mile. I don't understand.
That's, once that gets into the economic analysis and the blocks and all that, part of that, as you all know, sir, we'll have fidelity of that, and we'll go for it.
Can you answer one of the questions?
Well, right now, we are, we're torn, because we have no more appropriations. Either your federal appropriations are matching, none of our contract. We have FY '21, '22, fiscal year '22 ends in, what, 10 days? For us, and we have both, we need this year.
Yeah, right. So right now, let me, there is no work taking place on. Sir, he first, in your second.
The important stuff that you are addressing is that, in total, or is that an addition to?
So let me, let me, yeah. So we will do an analysis to say, hey, yes, there is a requirement that X amount of spots be available. And it could be very likely that you've already got it covered, and it's not a problem, and not something that has to be addressed. And based on the conversation about parking, it sounds like there's a lot of, so, but we will get to that analysis and tell you where it is and how it looks, but yes, there is a parking requirement to make sure, like Chris said, about 10 spots, I would say roughly aggregate, but not every half mile you said, quarter mile, it's, yes, sir.
And is that in total, or is that linear? Every quarter, every quarter mile?
We do an analysis with the town to see what's available, and we try to do it, you can't, what you can't do is do big parking lot order, and that's good. So it's probably every quarter mile, so we're stopping access, that's the bottom line, like that's all.
Sir.
Maybe you can, they can change this for me. They're telling the board, you can go try and get several parking spaces, that's all we want.
Yes, sir.
It costs them, it's nothing to do with the project. It supports the project, but if you don't get it, make the case up, you know what I mean?
Right, exactly right.
So it's a agreement.
It's a, it's a letter of intent to say, yes, we are interested, we support going after and getting.
So it's a agreement.
Yes, sir.
And right now, the project's got to do that, no money.
There is no money. Now, if we don't get, if we get it, guess what? 100% federally funded, we're off to the races, we're running for it.
I get it, I get it.
Yes.
So it's a agreement.
Sorry, just one more question. And I just, it just, I've heard, I've heard some of the answers about it. So Corps of Engineers requires, does Dena require parking? Do you know that?
I do not, no, I don't, I can't speak to that.
All right, thank you. I can't speak.
All right. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you, Colonel, for your time. I mean, you just support me out of. Hey, Brooke, truly an honor to work with you all, and appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
So, we should ask David to put in a letter if he can.
Chief, police report, please.
Hold on a minute before we start the police report.
Mr. Eric, can we have a minute? Do we need to ask David to do the letter of intent to the Corps? To get that money?
Chief, if you will, bear with us just a minute, we've got a new, you can go in here, all right.
Do we need to officially tell David to do a letter of intent to the Corps for getting that money? Or do we do that on the 28th?
I'll second you. I mean, just on that.
Okay. We need to talk into the microphones here. Mr. Urick, this past got a question.
At this point, David, do you, do you need instruction to draft a letter of intent to have the Corps go after that available money? Or would you prefer to do it on the 28th? It's a letter of intent that triggers them to go after the money.
It's six to one, a half dozen the other, salt and pepper, with the risk that the Colonel was talking to about turning your homework in late, so.
If you drafted a letter of intent to have at the meeting on the 28th, could you?
Oh, oh, no, no. I mean, I will assume that that's the protocol that y'all want to look at it on the 28th.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Move on. All right, chief, floor is yours. Sorry.
Oh, no, you're good, squared away. How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Good. So the police report this month, we had 638 service calls, pretty typical for this time of year, stuff winding down for us, so we're glad to see that a little bit. Incident reports this year, or this month, excuse me, the last month, September or August, getting tongue tied here, we had four incident reports, which was down from the month before, so we were glad to see that decrease a little bit. State citations this month was 10, with three of those being issued to low-speed vehicles. And then our ordinance warning and violations were 15 total, with five of those being issued to low-speed vehicles. Those are the numbers on that. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, then I'll just go into some public service announcements that I've got, but I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions? Chief, have you, with the IDO Connect taking care of the parking citations, has that eliminated your, or reduce your need to write tickets for parking out there?
Yes, yes, are not completely eliminated, but dramatically reduced, yes.
Considerably?
Yes, they handle.
It's helping you guys out.
It is, they handle 99% of the parking issues that we have.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. All right, well, I'll make a couple of public announcements then. So the last page of my report here, you notice, says which seatbelt is right for you. And I thought this was the appropriate month to throw this in there. So this week, starting September 19th, actually, it started yesterday, and it So this week, starting September 19th, actually, it started yesterday and it runs through September 25th, is the Governor's Highway Safety Child Passenger Safety Week campaign. So, we're trying to educate, Governor's Highway Safety, you know, we're very involved with them, and we had the seatbelt convincer out here last year, so... Anyway, just want to mention this to y'all, that this is that week, so if you have kids or grandkids, remember that birth until two years old, they need to be in a rear-facing seat, they can move to a forward-facing seat from two years and older. To go into a booster seat, they need to be at least four years old and 40 pounds, and then to go into a seatbelt, they need to be at least eight years old and 80 pounds, about four foot nine is the average height for, once you get into that 8 and 80 range. So, but those are, those are two good numbers to remember, is four and 40 and 8 and 80. That's when you start putting them in booster seats and into a regular seatbelt, so wanted to throw that out there for everyone.
Jeremy, because we always talk about how upset we are with parents with children in their laps on the golf carts.
Yes.
So, low speed vehicles.
I'm with you.
So, this rear seat, rear-facing seat on golf, on low-speed vehicles would also apply?
It...
That the children should be in a backward seat?
If, if they are under two years old, yes, they would need to be in a, in a backward, rear-facing seat, correct? Um, next public service announcement, I'll give you just some upcoming events that we've got. October 1st is Run HB, and I just want to throw this out there and let everybody know, start spreading the word. It's the big race that we do every year, it's a one-mile, 5K and half marathon, and the half marathon leaves Jordan Boulevard, it covers from High Point Street through Dunescape, all the way over to Betty's Waterfront. So, I mean, they run, what's 13 miles, I think, or something like that in a half marathon, so anyway, they cover a lot of ground. Well, part of that run over to Betty's Waterfront is that they have to cross the bridge. So, if you're traveling anywhere on October 1st, we're going to have lanes cone off, we're going to be running a pilot car, it's going to be down to one lane for several hours.
Chief, that Betty's Waterfront, that's Lulu's?
Excuse me, you're right, it is Lulu's now, it is not Betty's anymore. My apologies, Lulu's, yes, I, thank you for correcting me on that. So, yes, but that's, that's how far it goes, but there's, there's going to be cones from the traffic light down here, all the way across the bridge, down to High Point Street. So anyway, it's, it's going to be a big to-do, there will be deputies and Holden Beach Police Officers all over at major intersections, so please do not get in a hurry, if you have to be somewhere that morning, leave early. Yeah, like in airport, we've had people miss flights before, unfortunately, because they've had to sit in traffic, so don't, don't get in a hurry, if you're, if you're in a hurry, leave way early. I'll tell you, they, they will start putting cones out by 4:30 in the morning, we'll be running a pilot car by 6 o'clock, 6, 6:30, somewhere in there, and that's, that's going to run all morning long, so...
What time do you anticipate it being over, Jeremy?
That is a good question, because the, the problem is, it's dependent on the slowest runner, and I don't mean any disrespect to the slowest runner, if they're smoking, we'll be out of there early, if they're slower, then, you know, we, we'll, we'll stay until the last runner's through. So, yes, it, I can tell you, for a half marathon, it's 13 miles, it'll be, it'll be most of the morning. I, I hate to give you a time, and then somebody will hold me to it and cuss me out at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, if, you know, I, it's, it's going to be most of the morning, I will say that. Yep. The next event is October 8th, which is the very following Saturday, is Cycle NC, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 because I want to hear about this one, because I have friends who, but I, how they, how they cycle over the bridge, how's that going to work?
So, so, and that's what I was going to, we are not closing any lanes down for this, it is, it is going to be, the only thing we're going to ask is, we're going to have patrol cars around with blue lights on, trying to slow traffic down, we're not going to close lanes down, or, or the bridge down or any of that, the Boulevard's not going to be shut down, we're just going to ask everybody to slow down, pay attention. They, the way they're cycling in here, because it's my understanding that this is the last leg of the Cycle NC, they're going to be cycling in from Whiteville, so they won't be coming in, in one pack, they're going to be spread out enough that we didn't feel it was necessary to close the bridge down for, for that traffic. So, hopefully, they're coming across one or two at a time, you know, I'm sure they'll partner up, or however they do that, so... But anyway, they'll, they'll be coming over here, it's going to be a big event that weekend, so my caveat is, we're still trying to work out some of the logistics and get it in its final stages, but...
I take it when they come over the bridge, they're going to turn right?
They will, yes, that is correct, so, so their, their pattern, we have got that figured out, is they will come across the bridge, they will turn right, they will come down to Rothschild Street, they will make another right onto Brunswick Avenue, and they will continue down to Jordan Boulevard, which will be the final stopping place.
That's the final, that's where it's going to end.
Correct.
So it won't be up and down the aisle.
They, they will not be up and down, unless they want to go for a joyride, which I would imagine if I had cycled from the mountains, I would not want to go for a joyride, but...
I understand.
But yes, their, their official route will be just to make a, a short U-turn here and stop at Jordan Boulevard.
Thank you, Chief.
Let's see here, what else we got? That's pretty, oh, October 29th and 30th is Festival by the Sea, absolutely.
Which one has the beer garden?
Both of those have a beer garden, yes, both have a beer garden.
And that's under the bridge?
That is correct.
If I rode a bike across the border, I'd have that again.
Probably more than one, right?
No, you probably would have beer before you hit the bridge. Thank you.
And then October 29th and 30th, which we'll meet again before then, but I'll go ahead and mention it now to remind everybody, Halloween weekend, the last weekend of October is always Festival by the Sea. So, we're looking forward to hopefully some good weather and good crowds, and everybody to stay safe.
Has there been any discussion to have the whole festival in Block Q this year, so you don't have as many road closures?
Not with me.
Me neither.
Okay.
Me either.
I have, I have not heard any, as far as...
Would that help the police department to have it confined to that area? So you don't have as many road closures, or...
Well, let me, let me interject, with the planning that takes place and the requirement to have a site plan approved by Mr. Evans, and the lead time on getting the vendors and stu, and such lined up, it, it takes a long time to get that type of thing together, so the site plan is, is soon to be delivered to Mr. Evans, and at, at this point in time, it, it would really upset the apple heart to, I'd be afraid to mention that to them.
I'm sorry, Tim.
It's, it's not our festival, and we're just glad that we've been able to get a site plan from them somewhat in the past few years.
Okay.
Tim, I mean...
Questions, comments, concerns?
All right, Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
I got one question for you.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Staff-wise, are you still two down?
We, we are still two down, so I won't get into a long discussion today. We, we had a regional chiefs meeting today, and met with chiefs from all over southeastern region, and talked about some different strategies and stuff that they're using, so trying to bring back some fresh ideas here to maybe get some recruiting going on, that, you know, kind of, we, we flatlined here recently in, in the recruiting department, and so try, maybe try some new stuff, but this is all very preliminary, like I said, these meetings were today, so, but hopefully, hopefully shed some new light on, on some ways to do things.
All right. Thank you, Paul, you and your teammates do.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
Don't you have something else?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Dixon, Police Chief for the Holden Beach Police Department.
Oh, yeah, see, I forgot, I forgot all about this. Plus, plus I'm not a movie star. So, in, in part of the golf cart safety stuff that, that we have talked about over the last few months, we decided to come up with a golf cart safety video, and it's a short video, because if you do it too long, then people lose interest, so it's, it's about, what, three minutes long, I think, something like that? And anyways, it's, it's got some good information, it hits the highlights, but it's not so in, so in-depth that hopefully people won't get bored, and we're going to try to distribute this and spread it out as much as possible, so I introduce you to my acting debut.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Dixon, Police Chief for the Holden Beach Police Department, and I want to welcome you to our island. Over the last few years, we've noticed a dramatic increase in low-speed vehicles here on the island, so today, I want to talk to you about some of the safety concerns and legal requirements for those vehicles. The terms golf cart and low-speed vehicle are not synonymous, they are by definition two distinctly different vehicles. North Carolina Motor Vehicle Law specifically defines and restricts the use of golf carts on our roadways. Because a golf cart is a vehicle designed and manufactured for operation on a golf course, they are prohibited from roadway operations. North Carolina law further states that it shall refuse registration of a golf cart, and that it is unlawful to operate a vehicle that is not registered. However, what we often see here on the island are golf carts that have been converted to and registered as low-speed vehicles, which are permitted under North Carolina Motor Vehicle Law when they meet and follow certain criteria. These criteria are designed for the safety of you and other motorists on the roadway. The legal requirements to operate a low-speed vehicle are that the vehicle is only permitted on roadways in which the speed limit is posted 35 miles per hour or less. Low-speed vehicles must have lights, mirrors, a windshield with wipers, a speedometer, seatbelts, and a vehicle identification number. And lastly, a low-speed vehicle must be registered with the DMV and carry liability insurance at a minimum. Remember, this is a registered motor vehicle, so to operate it, you must have a driver's license. Also, all occupants must wear a seatbelt, including children, who must be in an approved child safety seat. As previously stated, the vehicles we see most often are golf carts that have been converted to low-speed vehicles. This particular vehicle has been outfitted with all of the legal requirements, and is now illegal to operate motor vehicle. While this vehicle may be illegal to operate, my question is, is it safe? Your vehicle is designed with several important safety features, one of which is crumple zones. These zones are designed to absorb impact energy during a collision. Another safety feature is airbags, these two expand and absorb impact energy during a collision. And lastly, your seatbelts, which keep you in the seat and keep you from getting ejected out of the vehicle during a collision. Contrary to the many safety features of modern passenger cars, this golf cart only offers one, seatbelts. It has no crumple zones to absorb impact, and no airbags to absorb impact, so all force felt during a collision is transferred to the driver and occupants. I also want to remind everyone, while this vehicle's been outfitted with lights, tags, seatbelts, it's had no suspension modifications. This vehicle was manufactured and designed for use on a golf course, the suspension was never designed for roadway operations. If you hit a bump too fast, or take a turn too sharply, you're very likely to eject your occupants or the driver from this vehicle. This message today isn't intended to scare you, but rather educate you on North Carolina laws, and hopefully enlighten you on some of the associated dangers of these vehicles. These dangers are not only present here in Holden Beach, but in every community across our nation. So before you send your kids out unattended, or hop on one of these vehicles and think seatbelts don't matter, I ask that you remember the possible consequences.
Right on, Chief.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Chief Hollywood's going to be calling.
Man, I've been asking for that for the past, since I've been sitting here, and to have it actually come and see it. Jeremy, thank you for being such a good chief of police.
Mr. Evans?
Everybody watching.
I don't think I can, I don't think I can, I was trying to debate whether I want to get his autograph or not, but anyway, no, I don't think I can beat that. I feel a little overwhelmed after following that, I'm not really sure how I'm going to do this. Building inspection report is pretty much laid out, it's straightforward, it's just a lot of numbers, I'm just going to go to the end of it and make it quick, so we can all remember what Jeremy just did. Right now, we have 51 active permits for new residential homes, we have 418 other permits that are in the, that are actually on tarmac, that are, that are flying high, we got, we've, we've got 30 that are waiting to be picked up, that are not active at this time, we have a total permits of 499, and we're working in active permits of 610 at this time. We have 18 that are in review, we have a matching number that's not on here of about 70% of the, of the, of the, of the 18 that would require zoning, and a CAMA in review, we have 10. And remember that all these zonings and CAMA permits require field visits before they're issued, and all the other permits require plan review before they're issued, so they're not just touched once. The service permits that, that we have that are not picked up yet are 111, and of last month, we were averaging anywhere from 22 to 27 inspections a day, for a total of 556. That doesn't count complaints, we haven't figured out how to get that in the report yet, and right now, currently, we have one structure that's condemned on the island, we have three that have stop work orders on them, 191 is being condemned, and a, a order has been issued for demolition, or they have to appeal it, currently, they're trying to get a CAMA permit to demolition 191 OBDW, that's the White House with the red letters on it, that you see. So, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. As a contractor on the island, I've seen a pretty significant improvement in that office over there, so I commend you on that.
Well, I think, I think the big thing is, is we finally getting some more personnel, we were trying to run an office inside with outside administrators that were working a great deal of time outside, but I think we're fortunate, we managed to move one person over there that's, that's doing a great job, and then we hired someone who's just doing a super fantastic job, I don't hear anything but good stuff about her, so it, it is, it's really getting easier in this improvement over there, and, and with that, it, it allows us to help move, we're capable of helping move, so, so we're hoping to, to do a lot of better things over there now, yes, thank you.
It's nice to see the face when you go in there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir, as directed by the Board, we reselect, re-advertise for the requests for qualifications for both Block Q and the peer properties, we got three for the Block Q properties, McGill Associates, Bowman Murray, Hemingway Architects, and Pinnacle Architecture. Those same three firms, along with Stature Engineering, provided a qualification statement in response to the RFQ for the HB peer property. So those, those statements, qualifications are in front of you for consideration and discussion on how you want to move forward.
Any discussion, anybody?
Well, I've had an opportunity to talk to some of these people, of course, by nothing other means than to ask them to turn in an RFQ, which we were lucky to get some high-quality returns. At what point are we going to be allowed to say this is the one that we want to move forward with, and what is the next step, David?
Having been attenuated recently to the potential flow of grant funds, and to make sure that if we, if the town wants to qualify any of these projects for grant funding, there's a, there's a, it's really important that we make sure that we comply with the uniform guidance for federal programs, which in North Carolina's case is to ensure that we comply with the Mini Brooks Act, which the short version there is that you pick a engineering firm based on their qualifications, and then when you, when you think you have the right one, you negotiate a contract with them. I would, at the risk of being presumptuous, I basically, it, it's important when we would get to any type of grant consideration and proof that we have evidence that the Board has followed the process of evaluation, and in that RFQ, there were, I think, three or four categories of the things that the, the town was looking for, for. At the, at the risk of being presumptuous, I asked the clerk to prepare a score sheet by the firms and the categories, and we... by the firms and the categories, and would suggest that perhaps, that y'all want to go through and score them and see how they come out. And I can make that distribution act, but that's just me suggesting that to y'all without any prior, you know, discussion with the board on how they want to proceed.
Is that something we can do now, David?
It's how you want to proceed, we're doing it.
Give me a scorecard.
It's, it's important that we be able to evidence whenever we get to that.
Okay. Here we, here we go again. You're giving us a scorecard for us to do in an immediate.
Well...
So I'm not saying it's...
It's however y'all would want to...
Can we take the scorecard and bring it back to the September special meeting and have a discussion at that, or even the October meeting, so it gives us time to really contemplate each one and their full packet over a period of time instead of in five minutes?
Well, I was just attempting to streamline the possible action, thinking that the board would like to make a selection tonight. If that's not the board's desire to make a selection tonight for follow-up, then y'all can proceed how you, how you wish to proceed, whether that's tonight, or next week, or next month.
I'd like to address this, if I may. If I hear what you're saying, Mr. Hewitt, for future references from inquiries from the federal government, if we have something in our folder that showed we went through a process of selection rather than just a simple vote, this would enhance our possibilities to become in better standing with the federal government.
It, it would ensure a higher likelihood of the successful compliance with the Uniform Guidance for Procurement under Federal Register.
So we've got one for the peer and one for the Block Q.
Yeah, the top one was Block Q, and the second one...
Is, is that, is this, as well as the Corps of Engineers report, and the...
Interviews.
Placement of interviews for the new commissioner. Can all that be done in the special meeting on the 28th?
The board can call a special meeting or defer whichever items from this agenda to a special meeting that they want to.
The answer is yes.
I just would prefer to take this home, get all of those out, and item by item do it, instead of right now, from my memory, or try to read the things and all that, and give a what's 1, 2, 3, 4 on this.
And I understand, I've just, with the, the absence of anything else as far as a yardstick on how that decision is being made, I've put that forward to, for y'all to consider as an appropriate way. I know that we, it was successful in our engineering reimbursements for the FEMA project. We did something similar.
Okay. So we're ready to move along?
As long as everyone agrees that this is, this is the exercise we'll do for the 28th.
Correct.
Yeah?
We would like that added to the agenda on the 28th special meeting. Heather, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for preparing this.
Yes.
Are we ready to move along?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Number 11. Madam Clerk?
The board held the required public hearing to close a portion of Carolina Avenue tonight. If it's found to the satisfaction of the board that closure is not contrary to public interest and no individual owning property in the vicinity of the street would be deprived of reasonable ingress or egress to the property, the board could adopt ordinance 2220, and the ordinance orders that the portion of Carolina Avenue from its intersection with Jordan Boulevard to its intersection with Quentin be closed effective immediately, and directs the order to be filed with the Register of Deeds. So it's up to the board if you'd like to proceed with that.
Is there a motion?
I want to ask a question. I'm reading it verbatim, so closing Carolina Avenue immediately, can you explain that? Because I don't see any rea, we have no, we have no plan, we have no engineer, we have no form or anything, what we're proposing to do with the property. I see no reason to, I don't want to see a barricade on Carolina Avenue immediately.
You can put in a future date, effective date.
So I would rephrase that maybe to when, and when we get a plan in place for Block Q, that we would close it as needed to complete the plan on Block Q, because it could be, who knows? But I myself, and I doubt anybody else, would want to see that road barricaded off right now. We have the boat trailers parked alongside of it this flounder season. This would be ridiculous. So I wanted to clarify what closing it off means and what a me, I know what immediately means, that means after the meeting, but I don't want to see...
I don't think Jeremy and Frank were gonna go down, down there today and do it. But no, it's up to you. You could put a future date on it. I wouldn't want to put a vague date. I would think you'd either want to put a future date, or maybe even you could just hold off on adopting the order. You don't have to adopt this order today.
Do we have a time constraint that we have to operate under?
By way of elaboration, this was done in anticipation of being able to cohesively develop a master plan by the consultant that was hired by the town. So if the board defers action on it, then any, any potential improvements are gonna have to be contingent on that happening. So that was, what the intent of it was, was to make a cohesive piece of property so that the engineering consultant wouldn't have to design around a road going through based on what the board might, may or may not do. So if, if it's the board's intent that they want to proceed with that understanding, just that the consultant's gonna be working with a maybe, as far as the property having a road through the middle of it.
Well, Heather, my question is, if we close it immediately, would that mean that it can be used for parking as it is now? Would that mean that it would be permanently closed and not allowed for any traffic?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If you don't want to do anything, just don't put a motion up.
Right, I just, I just want to make sure that we've gotten the permission to do, we've done the steps, so there's no you must act within so many months.
I'm looking at it. I don't see it scanning through right now. I mean, if you want to wait until you select an engineer or architect and then decide if he can give you a kind of thing, this doesn't have to be done today, now. I'll double-check and make sure there's not a certain date, but it definitely doesn't have to be done today.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Just, just realize that that's an issue that the consultant is not gonna have finite in dealing with. And it's a maybe, and I mean, if that's how you want to proceed, that's fine, too.
Could that be moved to the 28th also?
It could be. I'm not sure if we would have a date by that point in either of those.
Can you check, can you check and see if there's a time frame that we have to work on or let us know if it's 28?
When, when you say close, I understand what you mean, Carolina Avenue will no longer be in use.
It's withdrawn from dedication, it's removed from the power bill, the property midway of...
But are you gonna block it off? Are you gonna block it off, Jeremy? Right now?
Is it illegal for somebody to drive on it?
Can we still drive on it? Can people still park on it until? Now they can, for sure, but I'm, tomorrow, in the morning, can people still drive and park on it up until which time we have a plan for the closed portion of Carolina Avenue to be integrated in that plan? With the engineer knowing that he can use that property in his plan, I don't want to see barricades on Carolina Avenue till we have something in place. That's just, that's all I'm saying. It doesn't make sense. Just doesn't make sense.
Somebody uses that and there's an accident on there, who's liable?
I would tell, the question is, will it be barricaded? What was your, what were you gonna do?
I didn't have a plan. I had not worked with this. A hundred percent on it. If it's, if it's, my interpretation of this, reading it tonight, it's closed, no longer a street, it gets barricaded off. It's no different than Block Q, the place where the park, Block Q, and the night, apparently I would definitely want to discuss it with the mayor, but we may have a different...
Is there any common ground, you know where I'm going with this? Is there any common ground on this?
If it's, if it's closed tonight, let's just that, and anybody driving on that, if you're not driving on the street or highway, it's a state law in Carolina, it's a town of old, big street, so...
Slightly driving across the parking lot.
Correct. Well, yes, but, you know, if there was an accident, that's gonna be an issue. So I would not, I would not recommend that you both close the street until such time as you really want to close that street for purpose of the project. But it seems to me, as a matter of practicality, that the consultant can take into consideration what that full Block Q is gonna look like with Carolina Avenue added to it.
To that point, the RFQ was tendered with the statement applicable to town ordinances, everything that relates to it, and pending action by the Board of Commissioners to consider closing the portion of Carolina Avenue. So, you know, they, they were told upfront that the Board of Commissioners, it's a pending action, not that it would be done, but, you know, was not invited them to the party and told them they were supposed to bring their own beer. So if the, if the board doesn't wish to take action on it, it's not going to mess anything up for the, for the potential consultants.
Then we can hold it in abeyance until we decide it's the appropriate time to close it.
I don't see anything in the statute that's saying when you have to adopt the order. You guys have already done the steps.
There's a lot of fishermen that you said for...
Sure.
It is flances.
No motion coming forth. We'll move to number 12 on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
We had a few people put in to fill the vacancy on the board, so I solicited your availability, and I would recommend September 28th at 5:30 PM, that's a special meeting for... 28th at 5:30, if that works for everybody to fill.
Does someone need to make a motion, Heather?
You guys are all good with it. If consensus would be fine if the mayor's okay with that.
We just wanted to add those few things to that.
Does anyone object? Any commissioners object?
Nope.
5:30 on the 28th, special meeting.
5:30.
5:30.
Okay. Moving along, turning to page number 13. Mr. Clemmons, Public Works. We appreciate all the hard work your department does, sir.
Y'all been hard-headed the past couple of weeks. Past couple, 12 months. I do want to know, Jeremy, was that a clean take there on that movie I watched? You done outstanding job, and I just hardly believe you didn't have to get first take. Better you than me. You done good, man.
I'll give you a ticket, you'll get a door to it.
The memo on page 28 is in reference to the bio-solids disposal potential funding options for the West Brunswick Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant is in need of upgrade in order to efficiently manage disposal of bio-solids during wet weather. Over the past several years, facility has experienced operational issues caused by the inability to dispose of bio-solids during wet weather. Caused the increase in operational costs and the underlying reasons for notice of violations in previous years. The county selected Drewberry Engineers to conduct a comprehensive...
Need some water?
Yeah.
It's okay. So I'm gonna let him catch his breath. The county selected Drewberry Engineering to conduct comprehensive study for solution to effectively manage the disposal of bio-solids from the facility. The cost of identified needed upgrades is estimated at 6.6 million. The Brunswick County Finance Department has developed several financing scenarios that are attached for your review.
I'm sorry about that, I don't know what in the world. Just feel kind of weak, wheezy feeling. I believe I'll be all right, Frank. If you go to page 29, option 1, project funding to be borne by the individual participants based on their existing allegation in the facility. In this scenario, each participant will be responsible, they're responsible share project based on their respective allegations in the facility. Payment for project cost would be billed as an additional monthly sewer charge for the month following project pay request as submitted and approved by the county.
You sit in top of your desk. They're right there.
I'm all right. I'm all right, I'm, trust me.
I can, I can tell the board, y'all are one option, one.
I can, I can go...
That's a million bucks that we got to pay in like a year.
I can go ahead and say anything that's based off of allegation in the plant would be foolish, because we're nowhere near at our capacity right now. We're like, I think 98 million gallons, paying for a million gallons a day, that would be paying through the nose, as my daddy used to say in the past, that would be foolish.
But it's also a cash flow thing. It's, it's like the, the duration of the, of the construction, be it nine months or a year, you got to pay it in that, as the bills come due.
Absolutely. Option 2, I can read that whole, whole paragraph, or I can just kind of break it down whichever way you like. I'll go ahead and read the paragraph. Option 2, use of a 20-year debt funding term over a 5 or 20-year rate increase term to finance the project with an associated rate adjustment to meet the debt service requirements of the project. The examples below show associated rate adjustment in 5 or 20 years with associated rate increase. The first chart below shows a 6.6 million over 20 years will result in approximately 37% per thousand gallon increase in addition to current 220 per thousand rate. Second chart below shows a 6.6 million over 5 years with an increase of $1.49 per thousand over the additional rate. Basic terms would be $1.49 per thousand increase over the 220. Option B would be 37% per thousand in addition to the 220 that we already paid, which would be based off the actual flow, which to me, that would be... which would be based off of actual flow, which to me, that would be the way to go because you'd just be paying for what you were sending to them.
So in other words, your opinion is to, to go with the 20-year rate increase option?
That would be my opinion, Rick, but if you flip over to the next page, if you done it, you could do the same thing in five years, in a five-year rate increase. But that would be kind of a juicy chunk to back there at one time because that'd be $1.49,000 you were paying for five years. Spread that out over 20 years, looks to me like it would be the best option because it'd be costing the town $36,399 per year. You do got an option, well, option three. Option three, county issues of a long-term debt bond. Example below based on 5% interest of the participants' allocations, flow in the facility. Interest rates subject to change with the bond issuance, and that's a 20-year term. And basically, if you did that, you'd be paying $81,470 a year because that'd be based off of capacity too. So it'd be my opinion that the option two, two B, would be the one that I would choose. This is flip-flop of what the county had worded here because they said the option, they've got the charts in reverse of what they're on the bottom of the page.
It's the 37 cent a thousand.
Yeah. And you basically passing on to your customers. Somebody using 3,000, 4,000 gallons a month really wouldn't be noticing anything.
Just as a point of clarity here, the county is polling every, all the partners in there to see what the, what the desires are on how to, how to do the financing. They're gonna do this project, and so it's important that we tell them what our preferences are. And the feedback that I'm getting is that, that we're thinking that it's gonna be on alloc, not alloc, on flow for the 37 cent rate is what it looks like.
And I did question them, was this gonna be a one-size-fits-all? So I think maybe it's gonna be whatever the majority wants, the way I took it, but...
It's, it's not gonna be because the county's got the lion's share of the allocation in the plant. I mean, they...
And they actually wanted to respond, but a few of them, me and David both told them that it'd be on agenda for this board meeting, so we'd let them know as soon as possible.
I'd like to make a motion then, that we approve ordinance... We would make a motion to approve option two B for a 28-year payback plan for rate increase for the water treatment of Holden Beach's wastewater.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion? Anybody want to discuss it? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Clemmons, you still have to...
Yes, sir. This memo is in reference to storm we issued on Holden's Beach, basically island-wide, and as all of you know, stormwater's been a major challenge for years on the island and getting worse with increased development. I'd like to request the Board approve sending out a request for qualifications for engineering services to develop an island-wide stormwater master plan that would better quit the town for these issues moving forward.
Yes, I just, while we waited so long, but I'd like to make a motion to approve sending out an RFQ for engineering services to develop an island-wide stormwater plan.
Yeah. I'd just like to add, you know, I think, you know, creating a master plan and figuring out where we can go in the future is definitely where we need to head. I get questions every time we get it raining here, what somebody can do in front of my house to get rid of the water. And there's really no issues that I know. And maybe if we can get somebody that's more experienced and coached with communities like this, how they handle those stormwater issues, maybe we can figure out where we hit it in the future. I think this is a step in the right direction.
I'll second, and I, I mean, I would have a con... There have been a lot of island towns, as you know, over the last couple of years that have gotten stormwater plans, and they're using them again to get grant money and things. So there's been a lot of expertise buildup in innovative stormwater improvement on islands because it used to be considered impossible because you're an island. So what I would also like to, to have is, before the RFQ goes out, if the town manager would please share it with the Board so that, you know, we can actually look and just make sure that we, none of us see something that is missing. Because again, there've been a lot of beach towns that have done this in the, in the recent past, and there's different elements involved in the RFQ. And being as clear as possible in that RFQ is gonna be really important.
Yeah.
I have one more little comment. Don't forget the bike lane.
Don't forget the bike lane.
The bike lane. It's gonna exacerbate the problem, so...
Absolutely.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, right? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you, Ms. Clemmons.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Evans? For those of you following the agenda, we're on number 15.
All right. The owner, Jerry Fairchild, of 222 Ocean Boulevard East, is asking for the town to approve an encroachment agreement so that they may have access across that portion of the dune located over the top of Hillside Drive. We already have some of these encroachment agreements in place for folks to go across there. And it's just because the frontal dune, the road is now under the frontal dune. So what we do is we give them the opportunity to the encroachment agreement to be able to go across that dune without doing damage and then land on the other side, like everyone has at their home. The, their agreement is pretty well laid out. It's, has its legal ease in it. It's the one the town's been using for a while. It holds us harmless of any, anything that can happen, and it requires them to remove it if the roadway actually becomes active again. So he's basically asking the town for approval so that he can have a walk-in across the frontal dune behind this structure.
The town has no history of any problems with this policy.
None that I'm aware of. None.
And it has been done before, so...
Oh, yeah. I think this might be the third one I've crawled forward of.
I bet all, I bet all the houses down there have one.
Yeah. Yeah, starting about 180 OBE and moving that way, like all of them, yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the encroachment agreement between the town and Jerry Fairchild.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Pat, number 16.
Right. We have had, there've been a couple mentions by staff, and in the Block Q RFQ, there was discussion about moving the restroom to Block Q. We've never really had a discussion on this. That, that restroom renovation repair has been in the budget for a couple of years and has never been moved on, and I understand that there are issues. But again, we have never discussed what the various options are. And this is my question, what were we gonna do if we didn't get Block Q? So I believe before we make a decision on the rest, where the restroom is gonna be around Jordan Boulevard, that staff actually bring all of the possibilities to the Board and there be a discussion and a decision about the best place because there are a lot of different things that need to be considered. And one of them is gonna be where you put it and people crossing the road, congestion of pedestrians in the area and things. So, you know, if Block Q is considered the best option, I'd like to know that every possibility has been considered for either repair or relocation in that general vicinity.
We don't have the staff capability to produce that type of analysis. That's one of the reasons we backed away from it in the beginning, was that those issues appeared to be so, so complex and detailed, requiring engineering analysis that, that we backed away from it and didn't do anything with it.
Okay. I'm gonna say again. You have a restroom someplace that you say there's issues with we are encroaching on DOT property, correct? Easement. And DOT has told us they will not allow us to continue that if we reconstruct?
DOT has communicated to us that there's issues with locating public facilities in a federally controlled highway easement.
And they have said that they are not willing to work with us to allow us to maintain that?
I don't think DOT has the authority to give us permission.
So my, my other question is, if we hadn't bought Block Q, where else were we gonna try to move these? I mean, that, that's my question, is what were the other options?
We're stymied. That's why we backed away from it and informed the Board back in '21 of, of those issues. It's just fortuitous that the possibility of co-locating facilities on Block Q has now materialized in light of the additional loading that will potentially go into that site.
Are we still able to maintain it as it is? For now?
Well, I, I think we can maintain it as long as it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't trigger a permit or something like that. It doesn't only is, is it, you can't issue permits inside that easily because it's not allowed, but also it really has other issues that appear to be is on by the property. So I can't issue permits across populated. So as long as the maintenance you're doing doesn't trigger a permit. You know, I mean, then you're in a finite situation there. The other problem is that when you start adding facilities, the original... This could get very complicated, other than if we go back a decade from when I first started here, it was absolutely noticed that the handicap requirements that were void were civilian area. There wasn't even any handicap parking spaces back then. And what happened was we condemned that location for multiple reasons. And one of those reasons was the facilities that the bathroom was lost. And what we did was, we got into the lot to come down and they all looked at it and we came to the conclusion that as soon as we do it, or if we can, or when we can, we need to think about a relocation of those bathrooms to give a more ADA compliant facility. So over the years, and everything came up, we talked about it, we looked at it, we tried this building. It wasn't until this last effort, but we came here though that there was a problem with the location of that bathroom. And so I guess it was my trigger that realized that the opportunity for Block Q is the time to move it where, you know, somewhere else and Block Q is the opportunity. And I'm the one that brought it up, and I'm the one that said it so that it may help us accommodate the ADA requirement and give a better facility. Because that facility itself has got issues with parking, it's open space. So that's, that's the logic behind it. We never intended to, to, you know, shut the stuff that's over there or anything to that effect because I understood that after the plan, there would be action taken, which is a good decision. But it seems to me like the best common sense option here, all of that, was to keep it maintained and use it as best we could until the option grows and have some other location. You gotta remember, I don't know how many of you are probably, but you gotta remember, I started talking about Block Q back in 2015. The plans you're using are the plans that I bought for you in 2015, which was on top of when the repairs were done and the notifications. This is not staff's first time dealing with the issue. It may be the first time this board hears it, but it's not the first time staff's dealt with this issue in that convenient area and that location. You gotta remember. I think Ms. Meyer spoke earlier. You gotta remember, whatever you've got an outside cemetery like that, that is actually an option. It was made for an option, which is an outside cemetery. You're using it all the time. You've got concerts, you've got all this stuff. So as a planning, planning, I've always had it in my mind and kept it working that we need to do something. That's my explanation.
They definitely need approval.
Can I ask you a question?
Answer's my question.
Don't we already move on? Number 17, Ms. Pat.
Yeah, there's been, and Tim and I have spoken a little bit about this recently because the inlet hazard areas had continued to be debated over the past year, and it was actually on the September agenda, and they did make a decision on it. And I felt that it was important for the townspeople now to understand. I thought it, I thought when I put the agenda item on it would be where are we, what are we expecting? Now it's what has happened in terms of, you know, just what are the final results? What are the changes that have been made over the past year that hopefully make it a bit more palatable? And what are the anticipated impacts on the Town of Holden Beach property owners? Are there individual properties that are being, I'll just use the term inconvenienced? Yeah, if you, because you've been at the meetings, you know it, we talked about this a little bit. So it's just update people on what has happened and what's changed over the past year and a half.
I can, I can, this is another one of those historical things. I guess I go back a decade, almost a decade. They tried to expand the inlet hazard area somewhere around 2013, 2014, and I took up that mantra, and we went directly at them, and we challenged some of the stuff they did. And over a few months period, they dropped it then. They just went away. And then, of course, it showed back up in 2017, maybe, or 2018, that they started this expansion, and it was a huge expansion of the inlet hazard area. It moved it a mile. It moved it from in the 1200 block all the way down to the edge of Bama Sailfish down in there, and, which was quite an expansion. We, me and the mater, I mean, me and Mr. Hewitt penned a letter that was approved, I think by the Board for us to do. I went to, I didn't miss a KAMA meeting from that period all the way to the, to the one in May. I did miss the one in May, and I spoke at every one of the meetings in opposition. I spoke with some of the senators who also spoke in opposition. In January of 2021, I believe, we had over 100 people in this room. We brought them from KAMA to have them sit in the room, and they were given comments, none of which I heard were positive, but none of them were accepted, I guess, as valid. And so they, they really didn't resonate with the KAMA Board. I spent time with the KAMA representative that lived, I talked to him that lived on the island, and I also talked to the representative that lived in the county to try to, try to help us reduce that inlet hazard area, and I failed. The inlet hazard area was, met all of its public hearing requirements prior to May 15th. That would be the boundary line and the vegetation line. And so it was up for vote at the last meeting. The Mace, the Mace meeting was a public hearing about the amendments that were done to the original rules and regulations that were actually in favor of the town. So I was sure that no one wanted me to go speak at that meeting to put an end to something that we, where we actually did achieve a few...
But the town did have presence there because I attended that meeting in Dare County.
That's right. So, but, but, but the, the, the overall effect of it is more a stigmatism than it is anything else. Some of the rules changes that they made took out any negative impact in there in that meeting that would have really had an effect on us. The, because we have size limitations and because our lots are limited in size and we have stormwater percentage limitations, there... in size and we have stormwater percentage limitations, their limits on the square footage really don't affect any of our lots except for on the west end. The lots on the west end are far enough away from the vegetation line and outside of that buffer area so that they really aren't affected either. If anything, it, it actually shores up some portions of our ordinances when it comes to resilience and what we would like to see in those areas where it originally had the inlet hazard area. I don't see it having any kind of effect other than on a stigmatism that you're in the inlet hazard area. I don't know that it'll have an effect at all other than that. But we really didn't want to see the expansion. The other thing that for future reference that I think should make into the minutes is, is that I not only stood on my head and told them that if I, even if I wasn't working at Holden Beach, because I fought this so hard, that I was going to be back. They have a five-year review period. And I constantly called their signs, voted, and told them I was going to be back. Because they said that they were going to do a five-year review period. What they didn't have was what happens in five years when they review it and nothing's changed. They never could tell me what they were going to do. But I told them I was going to come back. I would be back. Because someone was going to answer that five-year review. Because I am certain that we're not going to have anything but a positive change on our west end. That's, I'm just, I'm just certain of that. So unless we have a real bad storm and something bad happens there, I think in, in five years. And I also challenged them on this. Does the five years start from the day they, they approved it last month? Or when they decided they were going to move the line? I mean, did they get, in other words, did they get nine years or did it get five years? That was my, my question for proof. But we fought it really hard. We did a lot of work. I spent a lot of time away from my family. And I, as usual, I had to be the bulldog for the town and I had to go up against the colleagues that I actually have to work with at KAMA. But I, I came out unscathed, the town came out unscathed, and we still have a good working relationship with NCDQ. That's the other.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Patton, you got anything else?
Yeah, the, okay. At the CRC meeting, at the CRC meeting, I understand that the CRC essentially went forward adopting what they put in the packet with the document CRC 2217, which I had included, which to me, what is particularly useful are two things. One is that, that you don't have to get a variance from the commission anymore if you want to put mats on the dry beach. It's not that you can just do it. But if you're going to enhance handicap accessibility, you will sponsor it as the local government and they're subject to review by NCWRC and the USFWS. So in other words, we don't have to go through a variance request. We're going to have to have a plan and justification linked more to wildlife and probably turtles and things. But we can go forward without having to go to CRC and wait for them to make a variance decision. They, they remove themselves from the process. So that to me is important because that gives us the ability to create now a plan for how we are going to have mats on the beach to enhance handicap access. Where we want to put them, how we want to do it. You know, we can start to put together now, what is it, what's our target? What are we going to try to do? And I would like to see some of this done so that we can have some mats on the beach next season in, in select locations where we're not going to have issues with turtle questions or anything else. The second one I particularly was happy to see is they're acknowledging that mats could be useful for residential walkways. And so if mats can be replacing the wooden walkways in some of our areas where it gets very long and there's a lot of wood there that's potential debris, what will it, what will the town need to do to proceed with a change in an ordinance or a policy or something so that owners understand how they can apply for using these mats for walkways over those long dune areas? So that that can become the, you know, instead of using wood, use the mats?
It is, the first part, it will connect with the other part here, because that's not an excuse yet, residential part, not an excuse. And we can write our own rules to the residential part, but as long as we don't go beyond that last line of that protection limitation. We go beyond the last line of that protection vegetation, there's going to be a limitation. And you're going to be subject to anyone who's on that property deciding what's going to happen with those mats. They can, they can literally decide what they can do. So we're going to have some ordinances that are going to need to be written. But I think the biggest part of that is, is that we just had the FEMA stuff, Chris Dogg, but it's my understanding that it's going to be hard with the true funds, the debris, some of that stuff out there now. And the CRC has recognized that that's why they're all over doing masks, is to reduce the amount of debris that's put out there for walkers. Really saying that this is going to help in the future. So I'm not expecting it to fail, but that's a different portion. The commercial portion is, is that we actually realize that we're going to have to have a plan, we're going to have to have a lot of recent commissions, we're going to have to have some sort of plans that we approve. And then you can start making plans to, to provide handicap access and better beach access, I think with mats. I think it's going to provide better access. I think it's going to provide better flows, and we'll be able to control some of the breaks in the dunes a little better. We've actually been using them for a while. There's been some out there, they're out there because of the wind and everything. So we have to utilize them and make sure that forces is done. But I think it's a very good thing. I really do. But I think it's important to, to residential parks, I don't want people out there throwing mats down. That's not been approved yet. And if you do put one of them out and get it out past that vegetation line, there's another issue there. And I think the town should be ready to write ordinances to hold those back to the vegetation.
Do you have any idea when they're going to make a final decision?
The information that was fed back to me through my same source that I used the old time, so the impact of that is that it's, there's, there's not one staff member that gets using masks on residential, on residential parks. So the resident, there's no one who is, this afternoon, we're thinking about it.
So maybe the next meeting?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Okay. Well, what I would like to actually make them-
It would be nice to, it'd be nice if they would approve it-
Yeah.
-before season starts next year, because we can stand here and it's not limited.
You put the mask there, we're going to sit here.
That's right. I know how it's been working on, on our, on our POA accesses on west end. It's been, it's been really good. Well, what I would like, I, I would actually like to make a motion that staff, staff begin the process of putting together a plan for where they are going to have extended mats onto the beach. And in addition, look at where there might be some areas that can have dry sand placement, um, parallel to the dunes and the water. Again, for people to be able to sit on the beach in wheelchairs, not just on a, on a, on a straightforward path. So it's the same thing that Currie Beach, Carolina Beach have been working on. It's both access to get down closer to the water, but also parallel to those dunes so that they can sit out on the beach.
Can you condense that motion?
Okay. I, I request that staff put together a plan for dry sand placement of mats.
Second, Madam Quirk.
With ADA consideration.
Of course, with, with the ADA consideration. ADA and ABA consideration.
Mr. Smith made his second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is unanimous? Anything else, Ms. Patton?
No, thank you.
All right. Madam Quirk?
The latest supplement to our code of ordinances-
I'd like to clawback, please. We got the tasker, but what type of timeframe are y'all looking at coming up with?
Well, I would like us, I would love-
There's, there's a whole bunch of plans and stuff going on and we've got to, we've got to figure out what's the priority on these things.
Well, I, I want something out there next season. I want something out there next season.
Just, please be, be advised that just because we lay out a plan to roll out mats wherever we think they should be, that it's going to be subject to a, a, a plan developed by the Fish and Wildlife and the Division of Marine Fisheries, which I don't know anything about developing that type of plan.
He just, he just, he does more than that.
Which is nothing, which is nothing.
This is one that we're going to have to, we're going to have to be proactive, ask them questions, push them. I said, I'd like us to have something out there at a couple locations. When I say next season, that means after Memorial. I'd like us to progress to try to have some stuff out there next season when we start to get, and any sooner that we could find. But I think that this is one we need to expedite so that there's a chance we have something out there for next summer.
I think that my real question is, is when do you want to see our spitball of a plan on the wish list of where we could put those at? When do you want to see that back?
Before the end of this year.
Okay.
Because if you don't do it before the end of this year, we won't have any chance to-
Got it.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
It can be at the December Board of Commissioners meeting, yes.
Now Heather says we only do cookies at the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Madam Quirk, let's try again.
The latest supplement to the code of ordinances was provided in your packet. All it does is codify the ordinances that you guys have already passed. So if you pass ordinance 2221, which adopts the supplement, you just put those papers that I gave you in your packet in your code book where you bring them to me and I will be happy to do this for you. If you'd like to pass it, you just have to adopt ordinance 2221.
It's a pleasure, the board.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt ordinance 2122 to adopt the code of ordinance supplement.
2221.
2222.
2221.
2221.
Just like you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Again, it's unanimous. Madam Quirk? Madam Quirk, you have number twenty.
Okay, number twenty. We just need to update the signatories for our town truist account. Traditionally, we've done the mayor, the mayor per team, the town manager, and Daniel. We're getting your time started. So if the board is okay with that, you would just need to adopt resolution 2208.
It's a pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2208.
Second.
All right. Motion made in second. Is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is unanimous, Madam Quirk? Mr. McRaney, number twenty-one.
So this amendment is to move the outstanding appropriations from fiscal year 22 to the current fiscal year. The appropriations were encumbered in last year's budget, but due to supply chain issues, the products and services were not delivered before June 30, making this amendment necessary. And these items include police in-car camera, mobile radios, and also valve pits, yoke boxes, coders, a generator, and a truck for public works.
This is just a housekeeping issue, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, this is money that-
It was appropriated last year and wasn't spent because we couldn't be-
Because we didn't get the products or services done yet.
So the money was there, we're just moving it over to this year.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve ordinance 22-22, meaning the ordinance 22-14, revenues and appropriations for the fiscal year 22, 2223.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Anybody want to talk about it? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is unanimous? Again. Okay, public comments. Anybody want to talk about anything good or bad? Yes, ma'am. If you will come to the podium again and give us your name, we know who you are, but we have to record it.
Good evening again. I'm Martha Myers. I address 2947 Island Drive, Southeast Bolivia, North Carolina. Just two quick things on the subject of the beach access mats. I'm hoping that somebody here can explain to me or tell me why there is a access mat at the bottom of the staircase at Avenue D. I've asked this question repeatedly and don't get an answer. It's at the bottom of a staircase. It's an access mat. There's a staircase to go up at Avenue D and there's a staircase to come down. And at the bottom is a nice blue mat that could be being used probably someplace else more effectively.
Mr. Hewitt will attempt that.
Okay. Yeah, it's-
The, the town of Holden Beach, as Tim inferred earlier, was one of the first locations in Brunson County to actually start using mats. The regulatory framework of where we could do that was oftentimes gray and questionable. The location of that specific one was, was chosen not because of wheelchair access, because it's a, it's a set of steps.
Right, right. Obviously.
And it goes to, and it goes to a lot of the times about stereotyping mobility-challenged people. That particular location, at the, at that point in time with the condition of the beach, it seemed to me, when I saw the mama carrying a kid on her hip, one in tow, and it was 110 degrees on the strand, that that was a baby step toward improving access at a number of locations there. So it was not so much for a wheelchair access as it was for a mobility-challenged person that was struggling to get across the sand. In the little bit of area that we had, that we thought that we could experiment and use it as a demonstration project, because at one, at, at that particular point in time, nobody had seen these things down here. We were unsure as to how it would be received. You know, I mean, they may have had problems with it. We've had discussions on, well, they're blue. You know, so that, that's the answer to your question as to how that transpired.
Okay, okay. Also, along the same line regarding beach access mats, that idea of the mat parallel to the, to the beach that's used on Carolina Beach and several others is a wonderful thing to consider. And I, and I hope that the town will look at that. And then finally, I just ask you to remember that when looking at the priority of, of the mats, I know finances are tight, I get that, but access is, is a need, not a want. And I just ask you to remember that when you're considering.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak about anything good or bad? All right. Thank you so much for your consideration. And town manager, please give us your report.
Yes, sir. Just a few items tonight. The first one being, I wanted to apprise the board of where we were with the financials relative to our parking program. Since we started the program before the end of the fiscal year, we've actually hardbooked, that is, we have rung into the cash register some $389,000 in revenues through the end of August, not counting the Labor Day weekend up through current, which we haven't hardbooked. Auto Connect owes us up, up to today another $28,000 in receivables due from Auto. So for, to date, you could say that we've, we have $417,570-
So for, uh, to date, you could say that we've, uh, we have $417,577 in revenues collected, uh, to date. The expenses, uh, as of today, from the beginning, are some $50,863 and with the net, of course, being the, the mathematics on that, is $366,714. Uh, good news, I know Christie's gonna like this, is that our FEMA storm damage repair project has formally, uh, we've formally requisitioned a project closeout, coincidental with FEMA's deadline being 14 September. The special obligation bond has been retired and our special obligation bond interest, we have received affirmation from FEMA, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, uh, has approved, uh, has been approved for reimbursement. So there are $500,000 in eligible proj, project expenses that are pending reimbursement, of which $452,000 of is interest on the bond. Uh, that will be retained by FEMA until the, or North Carolina Department of Public Safety, until the final project inspection, uh, takes place, which could take a year or more. So that's their holdback until they sign off on the project and provide the, the final, um, punch for this, uh, uh, holdback back to us. But the good news is, is that the interest, uh, has been approved for reimbursement. Uh, we did receive a notice of violation for the, uh, sand compatibility to the Colonel's statement today about being sand-sarved. So for all those shell seekers that picked up tulip shells and seed biscuit, uh, the price of that is that we're gonna be subject to monitoring for the next two years and we'll have to rock pick until, if required by the regulatory agencies. We don't know that that is going to occur or not, but we have been noticed that our sand, um, exceeded tolerances and is gonna be monitored for the next two years. Peer grant status, we've got several in the, in the works. Uh, the KAMA acquisition grant that the board is under contract for award, uh, has been reduced down to $155,000 due to a difference in our preliminary cost estimates and, uh, the initial award and, uh, the final purchase price. We've provided supplemental documents, provided, uh, we've provided supplemental documentation so that we can qualify some additional administrative expenses and are awaiting dis, disbursement from the state. We expect that to occur, uh, sometime the latter part of this week or next week. Part of acquisition, uh, at the end of August, the Parks and Rec Trust Fund Authority made a $500,000 reimbursement award for purchase of the peer. We anticipate that the board action in October will be to consider accepting funds via a contract arrangement. And lastly, the KAMA access grant that the board approved submission on has been, um, tendered to the Division of Environmental Quality and award on that grant is expected, a $50,000 grant funding is expected in October. Uh, the chief has already covered the October events, um, and that concludes my briefing for tonight.
Any questions, other town manager?
David, did you get any more information on the post and rope liability that you were gonna, you asked the League of Municipalities and they had a, nothing-
They, they didn't give the answer worth repeating. It was a non-answer, it's a non-issue.
It's a non, so it's, it's nothing? So it rests with our town and our attorney?
Right.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, number 24, Mayor's comments, real briefly. Uh, hurricanes, we do have one out there that thankfully is well offshore and it's a mean one. Um, good news is that we've got one more month to get by, in my mind, uh, and we will have a safe, good, non-hurricane event fall. So keep your prayers going, you know, knocking some wood.
Don't say that too loudly.
Yeah. Um, I think the beachfront is in excellent condition in preparation, uh, for a storm and, uh, we just hope that we can get by this year without any. And, uh, if there is one that looks threatening, we will be prepared and we will be communicating our normal ways of, uh, emails and other avenues to communicate to our property owners and visitors. So, um, let's just, uh, hope for the best and pray for, pray for more and we'll get on with it and get through the winter. I will say that the traffic on the island, which I'm sure everyone in the room understands and recognizes, it always slows down at this time of the year, but man, it, the swift really did flip hard this year. I mean, it was sudden, it seems to me, uh, more so than maybe in recent years, but anyway, um, Rick, you got anything you want to report?
Well, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to thank everybody that came out this evening. We had a good crowd here tonight. That shows that we do have some citizens interested in, in what we're doing, as well as I want to thank those that are actually listening to us tonight online. Uh, it's important that everybody knows, you know, the decisions we make are hard decisions and we're trying to do the best for the town of Holden Beach. I want to thank that all, all the ones that have signed up, uh, for possibly taking over a general round seat. It's still tough to sit here and see that empty chair here, but, uh, we are, uh, planning on having the interviews, uh, on September the 28th at 5:30. So, uh, anybody that wants to come to that meeting as well. Uh, I like to take, I thank the, the town staff for all the stuff that they do, as well as our police department. Uh, having that video this evening really, uh, eases my mind. If we could get that online on the website where people can look at it and, and give them a heads up that, you know, we're gonna, we, we know the dangers and we want to try to keep everybody safe. I think that's, that's gonna, gonna help us a bunch. I just want to remind all the staff and us, all of us as well, that we are public servants and we're working for the citizens of Holden Beach and we're working for their safety. And that, you know, that's always on our mind or on my mind and we just need to make sure we're, we're thinking about that. Uh, as Alan said, you know, this is the, this is the heart of hurricane season, but, uh, I just hope everybody listening and the ones that are still here this evening, have your plans ready. Know what you're gonna do if a, if a storm threatens. And, and be, be assured that our emergency management plan has been reviewed and updated this year. Uh, we, we stand ready, uh, to, to, to do what we need is necessary, uh, to make sure that the island and the people that are here on the island are safe. And finally, uh, we're just so lucky to be able to live in this beautiful place and we all need to, to stop a minute and think about how we can be kind to our neighbors and visitors, uh, at all times. I mean, you gotta think about how lucky and blessed we are. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Doctor, you got anything tonight?
Um, I was gonna ask you about any update on the short term.
Um, there'd be, well, we're gonna be seeking some legal advice in our meeting following the public meetings tonight.
Okay. I'll just check. Um, I'd just like to thank the staff for all their hard work. Um, I want to ask the public, it was good to see a good crowd here, but keep in mind that we are asking for the RFQs for, we're making decisions to make plans for the pier and the block Q. I don't think anything's been set in stone, as opposed to what a lot of the interest tonight was, um, decisions have already been made and those have not been made yet. So bear with us. I know everybody wants to see the pier open, but we need to walk before we run and we're working on it. We're working hard to make the proper decisions on what best suits the committee and to do the, the right thing with the, um, handicap appliance and, um, you know, compliance, I'm sorry, and make, make the best decisions. So just bear with us and keep in mind it's still in the planning stages. Thank you.
All right. Brian?
I also want to thank everybody for coming out and everybody listening. Uh, we do listen to you whether you think so or not. Um, thank you to the staff. You guys continue to work hard on the myriad of things that we have going on and it's a lot. It's not a little bit, it's a lot. This town has grown at least twofold since I've been here and I've been a big part of that and it, it's, it's moving to pretty much island-wide capacity and I think it'll eventually probably fill up every lot on the island. As we do that, it creates problems, problems have to be dealt with and you can't finish a task before you start it, so the quicker we get some of this stuff moving, the better. I do want to speak and reiterate what Paige said, um, that we do not have plans solidified for Block Q or the pier properties at this time. We're trying to recruit firms that have knowledge and experience way beyond the four of us sitting up here, five of us sitting up here, and the staff that we have to put together a plan that will do the best for the town and the people that live here, as well as the people that visit here. So to pile on to the people that said we were gonna put a big parking lot on Block Q, I don't think any of us ever said that, although it is, it could, might be a possibility. Could be green space, um, who knows? We're gonna look at all, explore all avenues and take the suggestions from, from the higher up, so to speak, in the engineering world as to something that would greatly benefit this town. I think, and I think the board thinks, just to, to, to go a little bit further on that, it appears that we are very close to having enough parking spaces on this island without adding anymore. And we said at first that some of the parking spaces that we have in place now may be eliminated in the future for a better opportunity somewhere else. This all started with the FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers, um, regulations that we have to have island-wide parking spread out from one end to the other. So we're looking at the big picture up here. We don't have a plan yet. We don't have a plan to show you yet. Uh, when we get that, I promise, it will be shared island-wide. And, um, again, I just wanted to clear that up. Um, I, I continue to see people enjoying the beach and I a little bit disagree with Alan because I see a lot of traffic out there. I guess it's because I'm up and down that road 10 times a day, but I'm, I'm happy to see people enjoying the beach and it is a nice beach right now and it's the best time of the year, if you ask me. And, uh, everybody needs to get out and catch them a plow to where you can.
Ms. Pat?
I do appreciate everybody coming. I, I wish more people would hang around for the end and I, I wish more people would take the opportunity to talk to us at the end in the second public comment when you don't have to be tied to the agenda. You can just share some of your wishes or some of your, you know, maybe some of your dissatisfaction on things that we're not talking about at the meeting. So I would encourage people to actually take the opportunity to use that second public comment to, to give us information, you know, don't be shy about it. It's, we do want to hear the things you're thinking that we're not necessarily thinking about today. I really want to thank Chris, um, for putting Stormwater on the agenda to, to get our, to get our planning going. Uh, that one has been on our, on our list of priorities for a couple years and it's just one of those that if, the sooner it starts, the sooner we can get things in place, the sooner we can go out and look for funding opportunities and, and start solving some of the worst problem areas on the island. Um, there are gonna be more things coming. You can look at what the board put together as our project, as our, as our BOC objectives this year. All you have to do is take a look at it and see the ones that got like 18, 17, 16 points, which means it was pretty much unanimous. And those are the kinds of things that we'll have to be attacking this year because there's stuff that's been in those objectives for a couple, three years and it just, it just has to happen. We have, we have to get them going so that it can all start happening. We got a lot of work that's got to get done in the next three to five years and if you don't start it with getting the right people in to give you the plan, it just keeps moving, moving, moving. So I would expect there'll be a few more things before the end of this fiscal year that we'll be starting. Um, but again, it's, it's all laid out in our priorities and our objectives, so it shouldn't surprise anybody.
Okay. All right, that concludes, uh, our first 25 items on the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll help us with our requirements to go into closed session.
Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6. Personnel, North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3. Consult with the attorney. And North Carolina General Statute 1433181181 to prevent the disclosure of privileged information.
Anybody want to make a motion to go into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, Mr. Mayor. Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimous. Thank you all for being here.
I'd like to make a motion for us to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.